Mercy, mercy me.
I don't know why I decided to carry my purse in there today. I never do that.
All right, we are back. Oh. We're back and there is no reportable action. All right. Are you ready to begin? I'm ready.
I mean, you're in charge, so you do whatever.
You keep telling me that.
I'm gonna keep telling you all year.
If anyone wishes to address the city council on any item considered at this meeting before or during council's consideration of that item, quiet down. Please enter your name in the electronic kiosk located in the lobby. The city council will allocate up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker for each agendized item. Staff reports are available online at the city's website, cityofredding.gov, and in the public view binder located on the podium at the north side of the chambers. Mr. Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to remind everyone, since it is election day and we're within 100 feet of a polling place, please do not comment on any items that are on the ballot. Those aren't within the city council's jurisdiction and that would violate electioneering laws.
Thank you very much. Margie Cantrell.
Do you want to do Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh, yeah. All that? All right, whatever.
We told him he was in charge, then he tried to do his own thing. He was like, "I thought I was in charge here."
That's what you keep telling me. All right, pledge. Mr. Littah. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Lori.
Good evening. Bow with me and a word of prayer, please. Almighty God, we gather together with hearts full of gratitude for the freedom we have to vote in our country. We ask for your wisdom and guidance for our mayor and the city council as they make important decisions. Grant them the strength and discernment to act with integrity and a deep sense of justice. As it says in Isaiah, "May you bless our neighborhoods with safety and our homes with peace. Strengthen our police and fire departments and guide our judges, attorneys, and law enforcement in their difficult work to protect and serve." Especially at this time of election, we are reminded of your words from scripture. Behold how good and pleasant it is when brothers and sisters dwell in unity. So we pray for unity, kindness, and respect amongst all citizens. May our city be known for its compassion and its commitment to the common good. We pray that all this happens in this meeting tonight and that it will all be for your glory and the benefit of all. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Ms. Yar.
Councilmember Aradet.
Here.
Danuka.
Present.
Resner.
Present.
Littah.
Here.
And Mayor Muntz.
Here.
All right, now. Margie Cantrell, I'll start over again. All right. Oh, presentation first? What is wrong with me? Yeah, Margie, go ahead and go.
Barely hear you down there.
He can barely hear us up here.
I'm having problems today.
I have spoken to the council before. Marge Cantrell. It's nice to see the council, secretariat, and citizens. I'm here for two reasons tonight. I am concerned about the fact that the Dignity Health Building is being built up there at a high rate of speed, and I see absolutely no activity on some sort of infrastructure that's going to make you be able to get from here across the bridge and onto Hartnell Avenue when that building is finished. The traffic that is going to increase because of that, you're going to need a second lane because when you turn onto Hartnell Avenue right now, it is one lane until you get almost to Humble Joe's, and that's where the encroachment is to get to that Dignity Health Building. So I hope the public works and the council and staff takes a look at that fairly quickly. Number two, I am here because Park Marina Drive still is, according to the poll that was taken in the record search night, the most ugly place in Redding. The Park Marina Plan, which is $1.25 million that the prior city council allocated to update that plan, is now three years old. The Cuttrus family had just gotten their lease back from the McConnell Foundation, who had those leases and emptied the buildings and made it look like that, and it's time to be able to get that done. We've had dozens and dozens of meetings. You've had public input, and we're not hearing anything for a few months now to see if any pressure is being put on this company that is doing the update. One of the things we were concerned about is that a group at the McConnell Foundation wants the civic auditorium torn down. They wanted more property sold down there or surplus property, and we don't want any property sold in the Turtle Bay area. It's time to let the Cuttrus family get their plans submitted and proceed at once. They had investors when they got their lease back, and then this got put on a three-year hold. It's time to get it done.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, man. We, I think the staff is planning to bring that Riverfront Plan back to the council soon, right?
That is correct. I believe it's early December. Okay, so it'll be actually on November 18th.
Okay, and just, could you, because of this immediate concern about Dignity Health Cancer Building, could you just make a comment on the traffic? I'm sure there has been, traffic study has been completed about it, right? So if you could address that? Okay, great, thank you.
By Quentin Gaddy, Director of Shasta Cascade Small Business Development Center. Thank you, sir.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Quentin Gaddy. I am the Director of the Shasta Cascade Small Business Development Center. Thank you for giving us time on your agenda. Let's see if this is... Okay, cool. So what we are, we're a nonprofit program that serves... Sorry, I'm supposed to go back. Is, am I controlling it or someone else controlling it? I'm not getting anything. Awesome, thank you. Okay, so we're a nonprofit program. We're hosted by Siskiyou County Economic Development Council. So we come, you know, I live in Siskiyou County, come from the north, but work down here. And we serve Shasta, Siskiyou, Trinity Counties. We provide confidential, no-cost, one-on-one business advising to small businesses, so, or anyone who's looking to start a small business. So we don't charge them an hourly fee for our services. They can come in and leave with expertise and not have a bill or anything like that. We also provide trainings as well. We are funded by the U.S. Small Business Administration and California Office of Small Business Advocate, so that's why we're able to offer our services for free. This is just a disclaimer, we have to include with everything. It's in the agenda packet, don't need to worry about it too much. So we're part of the NorCal Small Business Development Center. California is so big, we have five different regions. Most states operate SBDCs at the state level, like University of Georgia hosts the Georgia SBDC, but California, we're broken up into five. And so out of the NorCal region, we serve Shasta, Siskiyou, and Trinity. Our main offices are in Wayrica and in downtown Redding as well. And you go anywhere in the country, you're going to find a Small Business Development Center. We are a nationwide program. We're even abroad and in Puerto Rico and other U.S. territories as well. So if you ever work with another SBDC in another area, you can also work with us. And if you're ever going to another area, you can always work with another SBDC as well. So we are a nationwide program. We do have a full team of staff and business advisors, most who are based in the local Redding area. But myself and my program manager, Alex, are here. We are the full-time staff who work directly in this program, but we have some other staff at Siskiyou Economic Development. And then we have business advisors whose specialties include QuickBooks, so they can help a business really reconcile their books, clean up all their financials, make sure that everything they have is ready to go for taxes. We have advisors who are experts in marketing. One of our advisors, Brian Ream, is really well-connected with Startup Redding and the Shasta Angels and helps people put together decks for startups and things like that. And then we have folks like myself who will dive in and help clients develop financial projections, business plans, that kind of stuff as well. So what we do, we offer no-cost, one-on-one confidential advising. So there's no catch. We never give our clients a bill. We never charge them for our services, but I pay each one of my business advisors $80 an hour that small businesses can benefit from. So, you know, it's not a cheap service. A lot of times when people hear "free," they think, "Oh, how good can it get?" It's like, well, I am paying my advisors $80 bucks an hour. So it's not necessarily a cheap service. We offer coaching and support, so it's not just, you know, what are the regulations I have to follow? What are the rules? What are the permits I'm going to need? But we're also going to support you through the process and reassure you that you're moving in a positive direction. We host trainings every month. This month at the Shasta Builders Exchange, I'm doing a capability statement workshop in partnership with them. It's a no-cost training for them to attend. We do QuickBooks trainings all the time. Those are real popular, AI trainings as well. And we provide educational curriculum to local chambers of commerce. I think we're a member of 11 different chambers of commerce in our three-county area, so we work with like the Redding Chamber on putting classes together as well. And our areas of expertise are really quite broad. Our bread and butter is very much financing, planning, helping folks buy and sell small businesses. But like myself and one of my advisors, Andrew, we come from the restaurant industry. I used to work Carmel Pebble Beach and do venue development, food cost control, that kind of stuff. So if anyone's ever looking to start a restaurant, they can actually sit down with someone who knows the ins and out of managing the expenses and staff that's involved with the restaurant and actually setting up kitchen layouts and things like that. We have experts in human resources. If you want to figure out, should I be a sole proprietor? Should I be an LLC? Do I have to be a corporation? Am I even allowed to be an LLC in California? We can answer those questions for you and provide advice. What we really appreciate about working with the city of Redding is staff at City Hall do refer us a ton of clients. When folks go there and they fill out business licenses, people have a lot of questions, and staff aren't able to provide that level of advice. They can't provide direction to businesses and whatnot. So they do send them to us, which we're very, very grateful for, and we can provide that further advice. You know, they know how to fill out the licenses at City Hall, but they can't tell you how pass-through taxation works, for example. Some additional programs that we have that we offer statewide include the Finance Center, where we have a team of certified capital advisors who help clients with financial projections and strategic planning. We have a restaurant program that helps people set up everything from cottage food operations to food trucks to full-service restaurants as well, everything in between. I'm actually teaching a class at College of the Siskies tomorrow on starting cottage food operations, so it's something that's real popular in the area. We have the Tech Futures Group. If you have any businesses that are tech-enabled or have any scalability, we get them connected with UC Berkeley's Ha School of Business and get them connected to angel investors and other resources out there. One of our clients actually won the Startup World Games World Cup just a few weeks ago, Core Shell Technologies down in San Francisco. They beat out every country in the world and won first place. We also have ProBiz, which helps businesses get connected with government contracting, and that's everything from RABA contracts at the city of Redding to PG&E contracts to for-service contracts with the federal government. We help businesses with everything in between. Some of the key local partners that we work with, and we are actively involved with all these groups, we work really closely with Viva Downtown in the Redding Cultural District. You'll see us at every one of their monthly meetings as well. Startup Redding at Shasta EDC is a very close partner, Superior California Economic Development, and then we offer a whole host of classes through the Shasta College Office of Community Education. So we really try to work with all of our community partners and make sure folks know our services. And this is who we serve, you know, everything from nascent stage, like I have an idea and I want to start a business, but I have no idea where to begin. We'll work with you. That's probably about 40% of our clients are those pre-venture, nascent-stage entrepreneurs. We work with startups, the types of businesses that are less than two years in business and aren't quite bankable yet and don't have access to capital. And then we work with established businesses on expanding and being able to access the capital they need to scale their business and grow, add employees, add inventory, add contracts, et cetera. So it really doesn't matter if it's a mom-and-pop coffee shop or if it's one of the larger contractors in the area, we can work with all of them in between. Some of our recent success stories this past year that we've highlighted to the state, one of course includes Plantable. We helped work with them on a lot of their financing and was able to secure their bank loans with them. Star Walker Farms is an organic pork and beef producer out of Siskiyou County that just purchased a slaughter facility and is scaling and doing a lot of direct-to-consumer sales. And then Redding Veterinary Clinic, we work with Dr. Evelyn Townshend on that one, and it probably took her about four... And it probably took her about four or five years of potential avenues before she was actually able to come to a place where she was able to buy out an existing practice and have her own. There was one point where she was looking to start her own. There was one point where she was looking to partner with another firm. And we were with her the whole way through the ups and downs. So even though it took about five years for her to actually get her own place of business, we were there every step of the way. Some key events to look out for in the future and some that we had in the past. The one that's become kind of our big signature event is the NorCal Procurement Fair. This is an event that is sponsored by Tri Counties Bank and the Wind River Casino. And we get about 100 businesses in a room with purchasing officers from the federal government, the state government. We had RABA in City of Reading there. We had PG&E. We had Sun Construction. We had NASA Ames Research Center as well. They were there as a purchasing officer, Caltrans. And so it was a standing-room-only event. It was free to attend for all the small businesses, and they were able to meet directly with purchasing officers. And a lot of them did lead to contracts that secured. I had one client who didn't do any government contracting at the beginning of this year, attended the procurement fair and is now about $700,000 into government contracts working with Caltrans and CalFire. So it has led to a huge increase in business locally, because if businesses wanted to go to an event like this, they'd have to go down to Sacramento or down to the Bay Area. We decided to bring it up here in Reading, and it's been a huge success. We also host Capital Summit every year. We invite bankers to come meet with small businesses to talk about what their financing needs and to get them connected with, with lenders as well. Here's our local economic impact for the last year, and this is just year-to-date. So I know we still have a couple of months left. But so far this year, we've served 663 small businesses, 1,641 hours of counseling, and then 38 different trainings as well. We've helped businesses raise $7.5 million in capital this year, helped 23 entrepreneurs start businesses that didn't exist. We helped them increase their sales by seven and a half million, and this has led to the increase of 93 jobs, about two-thirds are full-time. So we do have to document our work with our businesses, and if we're not getting sales increase, we're not getting capital, we're not getting jobs, we're not doing our job. So this is how we measure our success locally. Within the Reading market, obviously Reading is our largest market. Siskiyou County is about 40,000 people. I live in the town of Dunsmere. We're 1,600 people. Trinity is like 15,000 people. So Reading is the vast majority of, of our business clientele. So we have 580 active businesses in the city of Reading. And those are, those are businesses that we've worked with in the last 24 months in terms of the definition of active. The biggest trends that we see for sure are accommodation and food services, then service establishment, then construction trades, then healthcare. But healthcare has been seeing a big uptick, a lot of people starting their own practices. And so we've actually helped quite a lot of doctors and dentists and veterinarians start their own practice in the last couple of years. And then some upcoming events to look to in the next couple of months and next spring. So we're going to have our third annual procurement fair on May 15th at the Wind River Casino. So this is in partnership with Caltrans, the U.S. Small Business Administration, the State of California, Apex, and the Veterans Business Center. So we expect even more turnout. Last year, we were in the Eagle Room. This next year, we're going to be in the Event Center Room, which is like twice as big. So if you know any businesses who want to get involved in any contracting work, send them our way. It's big money. It's a great way to diversify your revenue. And then we're partnering with Shasta Builders Exchange over the next couple of months. I'm doing a capability statement workshop in a few weeks. A capability statement is sort of like a resume for your business that you give to purchasing officers. It's a marketing piece. It tells you what you do, what you are, some of your key references. And then we're going to talk about how we can use AI tools to kind of speed up the RFP response for some of those bids, because if you've ever seen a city-published RFP, they're, they're, they're a beast. And businesses responding to that have to dedicate a lot of time and manpower to get those done. So that's everything that I have today. I'm happy to answer any questions from the council or public. I have my contact information up here as well. And the big thing that we just want to drive home to everybody is that we are free, you know, no-cost business advising, and there's no catch, other than we're going to ask you to like fill out a survey every now and again. We're not going to send you to any preferred vendors or anything like that. We just, our success is, is the local business community's success. So thank you for having us on your agenda. We appreciate it.
Any questions up here? Nope. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now, public comment. The council, City Council allotted a maximum of three minutes per speaker for 30 minutes total at the beginning of the meeting for public comment for non-agendized matters within the city's jurisdiction. The mayor will determine the order of speakers. If 30 minutes is not adequate to accommodate all of the individuals who have submitted their name through the electronic kiosk, the council will trail this item to the end of the open session agenda. The remaining speakers will address the city council at that time. All right. Yolanda. Jay Dunlap, you're on deck.
And I am Yolando Lupo. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for your work to revitalize downtown Reading. The new sidewalks, trees, housing, and cultural focus have brought life and hope to the heart of our city. But one part of that plan, paid parking, is working against that purpose. Downtown should draw people in, not drive them away. Paid parking works best in healthy business districts, not in areas with high business vacancy. As downtown bis, as a downtown business owner, 92% to 98% of the people walking past my store are city workers or county workers or students. 2% to 5% are potential customers, customers, and the unhoused. That shows there is little actual shopping foot traffic downtown. People constantly say they avoid downtown because paid parking is confusing, unreliable, and not worth the hassle, when free parking options, or free parking options exist in other shopping areas of the city. A national survey by the parking app Park Mobile found that 88% of drivers avoid parking, paying for parking. I also surveyed four local Facebook pages, and hundreds in our city refuse to come downtown and do business downtown because of paid parking. City council members, that is an act of boycott in our city. It is not uncommon in other cities where there is high business vacancies for paid parking to backfire, and unfortunately, it has in our community. As many elderly residents, people with disabilities, without placards, and low-income families feel they have, that the free spots are too far away, and they feel left out of our downtown plan for revitalization. When parking is free during our events downtown, hundreds, even thousands of people come downtown, the impact is clear. On regular days, our sidewalks and paid parking structures are nearly empty. I am the last retail business on my side of the street where other businesses who moved downtown were thriving in other parts of the, of the city, they now are closed or have moved to other areas of the city. Our business vacancies are way too high to support paid parking. I am presenting a petition with over 200 community members and visitors, including 54 businesses that are negatively affected by the downtown paid parking. We are asking that you eliminate paid parking in our public downtown parking lots and to revisit that when our downtown is active and thriving. We want to encourage new businesses, customers. We don't want a slow recovery. Thank you.
Thank you. Jay, you're up.
Mayor, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Do you, can you share later on, share this survey of the businesses with us, please? And you don't have to do it right now, but if you can just share it with me.
Can you repeat that?
The survey of the businesses that you have done?
Yes, I actually have them on the petition, and they've listed their names.
Okay. If you can just leave a copy for me, please, and...
Pamela McNeil, you're up next.
Evening, council. I will second everything that Yolanda said. If we want more sales tax, you need more shopping downtown. I live downtown. I work downtown. I own a company downtown. Having people not be downtown to frequent these things is insane. Whatever you're going to make in revenue, you're losing in sales tax. All right. I'm here tonight. I think you guys did a great job last council meeting. I think you're making progress. I heard a lot of hopeful things. One was, we should focus on the future. Best news. That's exactly what needs to happen. I heard from Dr. Danuka that he is going to lead a charge for bringing jobs. It's the number one thing the North State needs. We recently saw on the searchlight, one in five of our local population is on food assistance. We have relatively low unemployment. This means we have underemployed people that can't afford to feed their kids. We need to take this really seriously. We need job creation. I think Paul is the great place to lead that. I heard also in that meeting that Tinesse was going to lead cost savings from several people. She was going to have cost-saving ideas. She was going to lead the committee formation, and I think that is a wonderful next step. I think it would help us all kind of heal from the past many months of fighting if there could at some point be a public acknowledgement of the amount of work that Tinesse did on her own with a lot of opposition. No one would be talking about the level of cost savings if it wasn't for her work. And we, the whole city of Reading owes her major thanks. I think that Aaron and Mike are doing a wonderful job in collaboration. Their budget videos were very informative. I think this is a time when they could collaborate with Tinesse and support her in her initiatives. It would be a great story that people that were trying to find middle ground actually found it and did something for the future. I have a really hard ask. I'm going to ask Mike that he would voluntarily bypass being mayor, and he would let that go to Paul. That in the amount of job creation we need and focus, this is a time for a brand-new idea. And with all that's gone on in the last little bit, I think Paul could just rise up and provide accelerated leadership. Last, I think Greg's doing a great job. That, I can't speak to the quality of accounting and all those kind of things. That's not my expertise. I think he's a good guy. He's trying hard. And I think the more that Tinesse and Greg get along and Mike and Aaron support, that we will have the reform we need. Thank you.
Thanks. Pamela, what were we going to say? Okay. Now, Quentin, did you want to come up again? I have your name. All right. We shall move on. Consent calendar. Consent calendar contains items considered routine and/or which have been individually scrutinized by the city council members and are anticipated to require no further deliberation. If a member of the public wishes to address an item on the consent calendar, please enter your name in the electronic kiosk located in the lobby before the consent calendar is considered. It shall be the prerogative of any council member before the consent calendar is acted upon to comment on an item, to respond to any public comment on an item, three, request the record reflect an abstention or a nay vote on any item, or four, remove an item and place it on the regular portion of the agenda for delivery of staff report and/or extended discussion, liberation. All right. Do we have anyone removed or talked about there, Ms. Rester?
I don't have anything to remove, but I will make a motion to approve.
All right. I'll second. All right. We got all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mine is not working here.
I'd like to make a Voleen joke, but it's not today.
Yeah, not today. All right. There we go. All right. Consent calendar, that was easy. All right, appointments. 5.1, consider mayor's appointments to the city of Reading Community Development Advisory Group, Committee. I'll just share briefly what I did. The, there were three spots open and three spots, they all wanted to be reappointed. There were eight total applications. I reviewed them all. I talked to Nicole Housing and had her take an assessment of, of the three that wanted reappointment, and, and she indicated that they were doing a good job and they loved their work. I called the three, I called at least one of their, what do you call it?
References.
References, thank you. And then I talked to them as well, and I decided to reappoint all three. So that is the process that I went through. And Ms. Rester?
I'm, sorry. I was going to make a motion to approve it.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
No, no.
My, my machine's messing up here. All right. Well, all right. All right. Here we go. 6.1. Mr. Pagan, probably caring to consider ordinance adopting 2025 California Building Standards Code and related updates to Chapter 16.
Thank you, Mayor. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, community members. My name is Jeremy Pagan. I'm the Director of Development Services and also the city's building official here tonight to ask the council to consider a proposed ordinance to adopt the 2025 California Building Standards Code. So before we get into that, what is the California Building Standards Code? Strictly speaking, I have a definition here before us. You often hear it referred to as simply the Building Code or maybe Title 24. Really what it does is set forth the minimum standards for design, construction, and maintenance of buildings and structures in California. It's a multi-part code. It includes a lot of regulation and code language. I include the, the graphic here on the right for a couple of reasons. One, it's just a good visual representation of the 12 parts of the code. Each of these parts is like a three-inch, you know, three-ring binder. It takes up a whole shelf on our bookshelves, ton of regulations to navigate through. Second reason I put it up there is just kind of sort of a, a kudos and a shout-out to our staff who work to implement and enforce this code. You know, a pretty small but mighty team. We've got four people in the city that review thousands of plans a year to make sure they're in conformance with the code. You've got four building inspectors that cover our 60-plus square miles of construction. You know, in the last five to six years, we've had almost a billion dollars of construction activity in the city. And so really proud of our team for the way they handle implementing and enforcing this, this difficult set of regulations. So with that, I thought I'd throw a couple of pictures out of just the Building Code in action. So here you have the Amazon Fulfillment Center taking shape rather rapidly. Our building inspectors have been doing a great job keeping this project moving. This is a concrete tilt-up structure, pretty unique for our area, and a pretty exciting project. Also, we have the opportunity to see emerging technology. So we have concrete 3D printing. This is a couple of years back, some nice photos down there at Enterprise Park. But we also have one of these in plan check currently and one of these under construction as well. So our building division, we were one of the first building departments in the state of California to permit these types of structures, so we're really proud of that, too. So how has the code come about? Early 1900s was one of our first kind of versions of the Building Code. Then it was the Uniform Building Code in the 1920s. The building officials throughout the state got together and sort of came up with one model code. And then it wasn't really till the 70s or 80s that the current code that we have now was, was formed. That happened through the California Building Standards Commission. But in the 80s, the late 80s, we started with the UBC. Now we're on the IBC Model Code. And from then on, 1989, this code gets updated every three years. A little bit of California building law for you as background. It really stems ultimately, obviously, from the state constitution, but then from there, it's based in our Health and Safety Code. And the Health and Safety Code establishes the California Building Standards Commission, which is a state agency charged with developing and adopting these codes. The state regulation is then Title 24, or the California Building Standards Code of Regulations. That implements state law. It's the way that the regulations implement state law from the Health and Safety Code. Again, it's on a three-year adoption cycle. Important to note that at the mid-cycle, the code's also adopted, updated at 18 months. So effectively, we have changing building standards every 18 months in the state. Most recent addition is the 2025 version. That will be effective January 1st of next year. And it is the code by default. So a local government may adopt the, the CBSC by ordinance, but even without this body doing so, it does become the code by default for the state. City's historic practice has been to adopt by ordinance, and the reason being for that is the next bullet point there, we've had some local amendments to this code. Historically, we've had a number of them. I'm going to walk through tonight a few that we're proposing to repeal, and then also mention one that we're proposing to retain. But historically, the city of Reading has had more restrictive local amendments to[1741.28] But historically, the city of Redding has had more restrictive local amendments to the Building Code. Not a lot of them, but some that are actually pretty critical. So major changes this code cycle. Again, this is a funny anecdote. I asked AI to tell me how many pages there are in the California Building Standards Code. It couldn't even give me a number. There's so many pages. It just said it's lots of pages and multiple parts. So certainly, we don't understand every nuance and change in this code cycle, but these are the big-ticket items. The wildland urban interface is becoming its own chapter and title of the Building Code. So it's new and reorganized. And no surprise here, we're seeing the state push more ignition-resistant construction, defensible space standards, et cetera. Electric readiness is another hot topic. The state's continuing to push electric-only building construction. So we're moving, we're seeing a move away from fossil fuels. You'll see a lot of new single-family homes constructed these days that are electric-only. They don't even have gas service to them. So you're looking at heat pumps and those types of systems for appliances. And it aims ultimately from the state level to go towards that decarbonization goal. Another big one that we deal with frequently is EV infrastructure, electric vehicles. The last few code cycles, we've seen additional requirements being put on commercial and residential construction for EV charging. It's been 10% of your parking spaces, then it's been 20% of your parking spaces, then it's been 40% of your parking spaces. Now with this new code cycle, you'll actually see, unfortunately, for like multifamily construction, an EV charging receptacle per unit. So if you built a 50-unit apartment complex, you'd have to put in 50 EV charging receptacles. So we're figuring out how to navigate through that. We work closely with RAU. There are some code exceptions you can explore. If the utility can't service the load, et cetera, there's ways to sort of work around this. But it's notable and it is a challenge for us to navigate both now and into the future.
Is it even for affordable housing?
It does not make a distinction between affordable housing or market rate, yes. So it is.
But if in affordable housing, you don't even need to have a parking space, how can they require you to have?
It's based on units, housing units.
Right, but the units now don't have to have their own parking. So if your units don't, like downtown, does not have any parking for their, on California Street, there's no parking for those units. That they change that requirement. So if you had a building like that, which doesn't even have parking units, how can you have EV chargers?
My, uh, well, that's a good question. It is tied to parking. The new code, and again, I'm still, we're still digging into it, takes the language away from tying it to a parking stall to a unit of housing. So I don't know if that would then force them to put in parking to get those receptacles or what. But it's sort of new territory. We're not too sure.
So there is no waiver if they, if the unit does not have, because, you know, for infill, you don't have to have, you don't have to have a parking space anymore, which is why we have a, why we have paid parking downtown. Because those people live there and they're going to park in front of your business and never move if, because they don't have parking spaces anymore.
Correct. Yeah, it's a good question. We've yet to broach that territory yet because it's, the current code is tied to parking stalls, which has sort of made me think a little more closely about our parking requirements. So our zoning code controls parking. And so if we do some zoning code reform to look at parking requirements, we can reduce parking, which will reduce the required amount of EV stalls. So it's an ongoing conversation, but the code is certainly clamping down and getting more onerous when it comes to EV charging. But that's a great question. So building envelope and air quality, certainly enhanced insulation, accessibility and sustainability. These are minor items, but continued improvements on that front. So let me get to the local amendments. I think it's an important discussion. We are proposing for council to repeal some local amendments to our Building Code. The Health and Safety Code gives the authority to local jurisdictions to make more restrictive building standards based on findings, based on our climate, our geology, and/or our topography. And the code says that are quote-unquote reasonably necessary. So when my staff and I got together and reviewed this this time around, we sort of all scratched our heads and go, do we really need these anymore? And the resounding answer from my two deputy building officials and myself was, no, we don't see the reason to maintain these additional restrictive standards. Two, I'm going to highlight for you in particular is the snow load and fire sprinklers. The 30 pounds per square foot snow load has been around for 50 years in the city of Redding. We're not proposing to repeal it to zero. I want to make that clear because we do get snow here. We all know that we do have some rain-on-snow events and some heavy snow. But what happened is this, the state code actually now establishes minimum snow loads for our area. Historically, we were a case study area, which meant we had to come up with our own snow load. The state didn't do it for us. Now there's a calculation tool. It's the same way you calculate wind load, the same way you calculate seismic load. Now you can calculate a local snow load. The concern from us and the design community was it is less. So it's about 20 to 26 pounds per square foot. On the west side, you're higher. On the east side, you're lower. We actually convened about half, about a dozen or so local engineers and architects. We got in a room a few months ago. And we, the consensus of that room was that everyone felt comfortable moving to the state minimum standard and moving away from our own local requirement. And we agreed with them. And so we're proposing that. It's going to help in terms of, there'll be some cost savings for the materials and construction you have to use because you don't have to support as much load. I think also it will help designers, in particular out-of-town designers who work on projects. They're used to doing the snow load one way throughout the whole state. They come to the city of Redding and it's different. And we work through changes and delays because we're so unique in that, in that way. So putting us to the minimum state standard will be a great thing for the design community. Fire sprinklers, residential additions and remodels, as of today, if you were to remodel your house or place an addition on it of more than 50% of the square footage, we would require you to sprinkler the whole home, even if there's no sprinklers to begin with. The California Minimum Standard actually does not require that. And so we consulted with our fire department and they agreed. And so we are suggesting that that gets repealed because the California state minimum says, if you don't have sprinklers in your home, you don't have to put sprinklers in when you do an addition or remodel. And we're suggesting that we revert to the state minimum there. Our fire department will be coming up in a couple of weeks to talk about fire code. It's a little bit of a different story when it comes to commercial construction. But for residential construction, this is what we're proposing. Otherwise there, you just see, we just had some outdated stuff. We're fixing seismic design parameters, concrete masonry walls, vapor barriers, all very nerdy stuff that I could get into with the council, but it's, it's less significant. But there are going to be some cost savings associated with those amendments to repeal as well. Local amendments to retain, I thought this was important to highlight. The Shelter Crisis Act gives us the authority to amend our standards based on that act. And you'll see it in your packet. It's really specific to our emergency sleeping cabins. So the CBC, the California Building Code and the California Residential Code have minimum square footage requirements for occupants. And so what we've done, we've shaved off six square feet. So we require locally 64 square feet per occupant, 100 square feet for two occupants. The reason we do that is it helps with the pallet shelters the city has. Those came in particular sizes, as well as some of these other sleeping cabins we have throughout the city. So we just had to make a finding that six square feet wasn't going to be a health and safety concern for the public. And we amended our code so that the sleeping cabins we have here locally are code compliant. So we're recommending to keep that minor amendment in there to be in compliance with the Shelter Crisis Act. Okay, and I'm going to wrap up here in just a couple of slides, kind of going high-level and quick, but happy to answer your questions if you have any. But AB 130 is an important piece of state legislation. It was effective June 30th of this year. And really, it's what California is continuing to do, which is sort of a decade-plus-long movement toward housing reform, trying to streamline approvals, trying to incentivize housing production. You're actually seeing it at the highest levels of our state government where they're trying to roll back code requirements and streamline CEQA. This goes to further that goal. So we're actually heading into a Building Code freeze. And so the Building Code updates for residential construction are paused for the next six years. So I will not be up here in three years from now telling you that we're updating the code for residential construction because the state legislature said we're placing a pause on that. It's also limiting local jurisdiction's ability to amend the Building Code. What I just described as our local amendments, it'll be much harder now to amend the, at the local level and make the Building Code more restrictive based on this, this state law. And the last one is the model home rule. This is a big deal. If you have approved plans for a model home today, they would be valid for up to 10 years. So if a developer came into our office tomorrow and had a model home, because it's actually effective as of June 30th, I don't think it even has to be January 1st, which is this code cycle. But let's just say January 1st for ease. If they came in and got something approved, it would be good for 10 years. Today, they have to update that set of plans every three years with the new code cycle. So that costs them money to develop more plans and draw up plans and submit them to us. Furthermore, if the codes add more requirements to construction, it continues to escalate the cost of construction for those homes. So the state has frozen that for a model home. And now you can get up to 10 years of building off of, of one plan approval, which saves both money in design and construction. We do model home construction all throughout the city. So you know Shastina Ranch, all of, most all of our subdivisions end up getting an approval that we call a master plan or a model home. And then essentially what you're doing is just copying and pasting that home throughout the subdivision. So a subdivision like Shastina Ranch probably has half a dozen or so master plans or model homes. So for these large-scale subdivisions, this model home rule could mean pretty significant savings for them. And it's a practice that we already do here in the city. And so this, this implementation of this rule will actually just pause those approvals for 10 years. So in summary, the Building Code is the code by default. State law requires enforcement of the Building Code, which is why you have your building division here at the city to do that work. The local ordinance allows for us to amend the Building Code. Remember, specifically, we're just amending it in that really minor way for the Shelter Crisis Act for our emergency sleeping cabins. The significant changes to the Building Code are wildland urban interface requirements, electric readiness, and then again, the big one is EV charging requirements. And what I put here is just wins for local development. The repeal of our local amendments, notably the reduced snow load and fire sprinkler requirements, I think will be beneficial to our development community. And the state legislation, AB 130, freezing that code for six years and the model home approval for 10 years, I think will also be of significant benefit to the development community here locally. So staff recommends to introduce the ordinance amending our code relating to adoption of the 2025 Building Code for first reading by title only and to waive the full reading, to authorize our city attorney and the city clerk to publish a summary ordinance, and finally, find that adoption of the 2025 CBSC does not qualify as a project under the California Environmental Quality Act. And with that, I'm available for any questions you might have.
Well, let's open the meeting. Open the public hearing. See if there are, we have no public comment. Councilmember Danuka.
Well, I applaud you for reducing the restrictive amendments. So thank you. And it's good to see some sense prevailing at California state level by freezing the six-year requirement in model home. Great. Do you have many more things which are more restrictive than the current state code? And could we repeal them also?
We, at the Building Code level, all that we're proposing to amend is that emergency sleeping cabin language. So.
Right. But I'm just saying is, are there many, you brought five or six or so to repeal. What I'm asking is, are there many more amendments which make it more restrictive in the city compared to the city, compared to the state code?
No, we do not. Here in the city of Redding, we have no amendments to the Building Code now if council approves, except for the emergency sleeping cabins. Otherwise, everything is state minimum code.
But previously, because you said that our Building Code, there was one line you mentioned, that our Building Code is more restrictive than the state.
Yeah, so you're probably referring to, let me see, this one? So these, this, these.
No, before that, there was one more. I think there was one line you mentioned that city of Redding historically had more restrictive local amendments.
Correct.
Yeah, that's what he said.
So my question is, we are repealing some of them. Are there many more such restrictive amendments?
No.
Good. Wonderful.
You just said that, I thought. All right, we'll close the meeting. Thank you very much. Hearing, yeah, hearing. I'm messing up all over the place. Anybody else have questions?
I just want to say thank you. So I know this is a lot of work, but thank you for taking the restrictions off.
Motion to approve.
Okay, Vice Mayor LaTah.
Oh, I think he already asked the question I kind of had. I mean, I felt like if there was more to remove, we would have had more contractors here speaking up. But I'm assuming that you don't have a list of items that contractors are asking you to evaluate to make less restrictive, because they would be here speaking.
Yeah, that's correct. And the state minimum code is already quite restrictive in its own right. Local amendments, if we were to adopt them, have to be more restrictive. And so we're proposing to remove all of them except for that one.
We're very excited. Yeah, I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve, okay.
Give us one, a little second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see if I can do one right. Personnel, Chief Van Landingham. Consider 4896 work-scheduled pilot program with the Redding Fire Department via side-letter agreements with International Association of Firefighters, Local 934, and UPEC Redding Fire Management Unit. Sir?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight's item before you is to consider the 4896 work-scheduled pilot program in the Redding Fire Department via side-letter agreements in the international, with the International Association of Firefighters, Local 1934, and UPEC, which is our Redding Fire Management Unit. I do have some firefighters here in the, in the group tonight to show support. I'm in favor of this and our firefighters are well, also in favor of it. It was a good year-long or so labor management collaboration. We spent quite a bit of time with city personnel, city manager's office, each one of the bargaining units, fire administration, going through this. Really, it's twofold. I see this as a benefit to our firefighters to improve the health and wellness for our firefighters so they can get more sleep and downtime with their families. And then two, hopefully it'll help us with some recruitment and retention. We've actually had some people decide not to come work at Redding Fire because we were not on what we call the 4896 schedule. So let me just tell you a little bit about what we're currently doing, then I'll explain the 4896 and maybe some pros and cons. And I'll be here for any questions if you have them. Currently, we work 24-hour shifts with a day off in between. And we do that for four shifts consecutively. So it's eight days, day on, day off, day on, day off, and so on. And then after that four-day period off, they do another tour of four days with a day off in between each, and then they have six days off after that. So it equivalent to about 56 hours a week. It averages out to 2912 hours a year. So if you're familiar with your 40-hour week schedule, that's 20, 20, 80 hours. The firefighters work at 2912. So it's about 10 days a month that we're doing it. The 4896 schedule, so as you can imagine, think about this. You're working a 24-hour shift, you're busy all night, then you get home. There's some downtime you have to spend just to, just to, you know, kind of relax and, and get back to normal, if you will, so you're not on high alert. And then you've got family obligations, you have things to do around the house. And then by that evening, you're ramping up, getting ready for that next shift. And so this particular schedule, in my opinion, doesn't allow our firefighters the time off that they really need to recuperate and get the rest that they need. So the 4896 schedule is taking those two 24-hour shifts and putting them together. So a back-to-back shift for 48 hours and then four days off. And that just continues throughout the year. So it's two on, four off, two on, four off, and continues throughout the year. And what that does allows them to take that first day off just to, you know, you know, de-energize a little bit and relax. And then they have the rest of the time to take care of family needs and whatever else they need to do to get back to the fire station so that they're healthy and sharp and ready to go. So obviously, this, this particular schedule has been in the fire service nationally for quite some time. I think we're a little bit late to the game getting to it for sure. So there's plenty of research that's been done. You can find it, you can Google it, there's pros and cons to it. Mainly, the pros are what some of the things that I mentioned, that it gives you a longer continuous recovery period, the four days off, which results in, you know, improved rest, improved morale, and, and more time with the family. So that work-life balance is a little bit better. It also reduces the commute time. So instead of coming to work 10 days a month, you're really coming to work five days a month. Yeah, if you're not working any overtime shifts, we'll take that, set it on the shelf for this conversation. But, so this is really helpful for people that may not live specifically here in the city. So if people live out in further regions, they have less commute time, therefore they're saving some gas money as well. It helps with, with crew continuity, honestly, with working with the same people for a longer duration. It really helps with that crew continuity. This particular schedule also has been associated with less use of sick time. And, you know, the past, my past life, where I came from, we actually did see a reduction in sick time usage because of this schedule, the way it worked out. You're on two days and you're off for four. You didn't need to take a vacation or a sick day, or in our case, what we call a comp day. So we are anticipating seeing less leave time off. Therefore, that may translate to less overtime being spent. So some of the cons, of course, really are around busy houses. We do have a couple of busy stations here in the city. And, and so as you can imagine, if you're working that first 24-hour shift, you're busy all day, you're busy all night, that second shift, it could be a doozy. So we have some mitigation factors that we're going to put in place that we've worked out with the bargaining units, that we could allow that engine company to then, the second day, they go to a slower house, bring that slower engine to the busy house. Or we can also reduce the amount of scheduled stuff that we have for that engine company on day two. So we do have some mitigation factors in there to help with that. So we do have some mitigation factors in there to help with that as we have crews have busy nights. It could, you know, longer absences from family and community obligation. So on the one hand, you have more time off, the four days together with your family, but you are going to be away from your family now for two days as well. I can tell you from my past experience, once you get used to that schedule, it's really nice. And, and so we don't anticipate that being a problem. It does become problematic to try to cover those vacancies that we have when somebody is off on sick leave or vacation. So if you're trying to get somebody to come in on overtime and work a full 48 hours, that's, that could be problematic. So what we've agreed to between the associations and us is to just do that in 24 hour blocks. So our, our callbacks for those vacancies will be in the 24 hour blocks. And then the next day, we'll look for another callback on that. So we do have some mitigation factors that we're going to build into this. So of course, our recommendation is that we do this on a 12 month basis. We try it out and each party, if we decide that it's not for us, of course, they'll be deciding if they like the schedule or not. For administration, we're going to be paying attention to excessive, you know, any, you know, if our leave time is going up or if our overtime expense is going up, those will be some things we'll have to look at and evaluate. And then of course, for me, it's mainly making sure that we have firefighters healthy and functioning on all cylinders when they come to the fire station. So if we're not seeing that type of result from this, then it's something that we can backtrack from and, and go another direction. But for now, we're pretty excited about moving to this 4896 schedule. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I just wanted to say that I was excited to see this on the agenda during my ride alongs. I do think that it's something that, that I've learned about us not being quite as competitive with other agencies. I know a handful of gentlemen who commute to other areas of the state because they work these schedules and it's nicer for them and for their family. I'm also hoping that we will see a decrease in injury, those sort of things, just overall better health outcomes with that four days of, of downtime to rest, recoup, nurse a wound, any of those sort of, any of those sort of things. So I'm excited about this trial. So I just wanted to say thank you. I'll make a motion. I know others may have things to say.
Yeah, I, I'm really excited by this too. I just think about the opportunity to take more time off, plan longer vacations. And I see an overall benefit to this. So I'm also really excited to see this come back and see how this works during the trial period. And my only concern to be is over the overtime is, this is a trial period. We're just not exactly sure how this is going to work, if it's going to hurt us during a, a budget cycle that we're trying to watch every penny, nickel and dime that we're spending. So I'm assuming we might get, we won't have to wait a year to get feedback on the overtime. So if there's any variances possibly, that we'll be able to get some information a little faster if there's something not working, so.
Sure.
And I'll second that emotion, so.
All right, council member, it.
Yeah, I think I just had some questions as what are the measurables of success for this program? Like what makes this a better option for you? And then I do think that coming back maybe at six months to sort of update us financially, if, you know, what we're seeing and how things are tracking, I just think would be wise through the process. But what are you considering as measurements of success for switching to this, these hours?
Less leave time, therefore, less overtime, also less injuries. We're hoping that our firefighters are much more rested when they come to work. And overall wellness of our staff. You know, we've done some pretty, pretty good things here coming up to make sure that our crews have, you know, fitness time to be able to work out. We have mental health, crisis intervention resources for them as well. We have cancer screening that is coming to us soon. It's out of RFP process. So when we see less risk management claims, and that's certainly going to be a measurement as well.
So it's, it's six months, and I know that would be in the middle of next year.
It's a little bit of a short window to try to figure all that out. But, but I, we certainly can gather some information at that point.
Yeah, if we already know that that's what we want our measurables to be, then maybe at six months, you just give us a rough idea of how we're tracking with those things.
We can do that.
Okay, thanks.
I'm sorry, go ahead. So, yeah, I would like to see what Tessa just said, that in six months, we can give some kind of update before we have to make a decision the end of the year, next year. Only question I have is, in this 48 hours period, do they sleep or they just don't sleep for 48 hours?
Depends what station.
Right, I mean, just curious, you know? I mean, I, I'm a doctor, I've slept, you know, like five minutes in 48 hours, but that was in my younger age, not anymore.
Very young.
Okay.
Well, you know how it is, you know, when you're on duty, it's tough to sleep anyways.
Right.
And you're always kind of anticipating when the bell's going to go off and where you need to go. And it really depends on what station you're located at. But even our slowest stations get calls in the middle of the night.
Right.
Right, so that interrupts that deep sleep pattern.
Right.
And that is, is not conducive to being a healthy person.
Yeah, that's what I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit worried about that part because 48 hours is a long period. And, you know, I know adrenaline takes over and you start getting into the action, you work. But I'm just worried about that part, that 48 hours going without any decent sleep may be a little bit of worry.
I don't know.
No, it's a valid concern. And for those stations that are not able to go to bed at night because they're having call after call after call, those are the particular situations where that next day, that battalion chief will, you know, change their, modify their schedule so take things off the books, so that they're not having to go to some class or do some pub ed or things like that. Or maybe even move them to a slow station so that they can get some more sleep and downtime during the day, right? So we're going to have to look at some of these things that historically, the fire department, you know, you've kind of got this eight to five mentality that you're on, looking sharp, doing all the professional things. And then after five, you're still on duty, but you're in the station a little more relaxed and dressed down and, and relaxing. But then you get these 911 calls in the middle of the night too. So it is a problem. And that's why we think that coupling that two days on with four full days off will really give our staff the time to get caught up on that needed deep sleep.
Would we be ever taking an engine or a fire station out of service because of needed rest for too many calls during the 48 hour cycle?
Not for this, not for this particular situation. Only reason we'd have to do that is if we couldn't get people back. And I can't think of a time that I've been here in five years that we've had to do that.
I recommend a ride along with them, so you can.
Right, but I'm saying, you know, like after 36 hours of not sleeping, if you're driving that fire truck at high speed.
They don't go high speed.
You should do a ride along with them.
I think our ride along should be 48 hours now.
I think it would help, I think it would give you some context.
It's a full 48 hours ride along.
I'm just, you know.
They can handle it.
Okay, good, good to know that they're tough, they can handle it.
This doesn't require any more personnel, correct?
No, sir.
Okay. Should we take a vote? Any more questions?
I'm in motion.
Yeah, there was.
Mike seconded it.
Tessa seconded it.
Mike seconded it.
Aye.
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 Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Unanimous night.
Thank you, gentlemen.
End it quickly.
Any travel reports? No travel reports.
No, it's just.
Number 12, any suggestions?
May I?
Be done.
There are a couple of pending items. I just wanted to get some update from the city manager, which we were planning to bring, when are they coming up? One was the update on the parolee program and how we are fighting back on that.
Was that the parolee program, was that what you said?
Yeah, those are coming.
Yes.
So we are, we are working on that internally with staff. And we have a number of tours that we are working on. We have attended one tour. We have also some presentations by some of the local entities that provide services. And then our city attorney is looking at some of the state and federal rules. We're also looking through our development services division or department. We're looking at the different zoning codes that, that could also affect the operation of those programs. I anticipate, I mentioned last time that we would probably need about a month to get some sort of like full report brought back to the council so we had something informative. And so we're still aiming for that and hoping to get that maybe in early December back to the council. But we're seeing some good early results. I know that, and I would defer back to the, the chief in regards to, you know, how the, the registrants are being, you know, we have not seen any out of state registrants.
Good.
Coming into our community for the last, probably three or four weeks. And so that's a good positive because, you know, there are some, there are some meetings that were held. And I think that helped with some of those, those programmatic decisions that were being done, so.
That's a good progress, thank you. The second thing was financial oversight committee is going to come up next time or?